This conference will now be recorded.
I don't talk much.
Me neither. Do you do the swearing in?
I'll be. Where's Steve?
We're getting another thing going on.
It is now 6:03. Call to order, the regular meeting of the City Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. We have a roll call, please.
Chair Story.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Present.
Commissioner Lozard. Commissioner Henderson is absent. Commissioner Gutierrez.
Here.
Commissioner Holman.
Here.
We have six commissioners. We have a quorum. And please remember to turn on your microphone when you speak. Thank you.
Okay, next we have swearing in of the audience, please. Jana.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under penalty or perjury.
Thank you, Jana. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for the January 23rd, 2024. Could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Have a motion from Greg, a second from Jesse to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the November 28th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And I believe we had a couple of people that were not here, right?
I wasn't here.
So we had Saul, Jana, and Richard, all absent?
Oh. Excuse me, Saul came in.
Yeah.
Okay. So those mentioned cannot vote on the approval of the minutes, correct?
Correct.
That being said, may I have a, and if anybody's got any comments or questions on those minutes, if not, I accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Did you move?
I stood still.
Was that you? Was that you?
Sure.
Saul, Richard, we'll stagger this up a little bit. So we have a motion by Saul and a second by Richard to approve the minutes from the November 28th, 2023 meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we move on to our agenda items. Item number 23-015, a special use permit for professional office. Could I have a motion to waive the reading of the finding of facts, et cetera?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Jana and a second by Jesse to waive the reading of the findings of facts, land use and zoning considerations with respect to case 23-015. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, none. Next, we have the cases being presented by Meredith.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Story. Our first case tonight is case 23-015 SUP, a request for a special use permit in the R3 Residential Zoning District to operate a professional office for counseling sessions and services, including boarding rooms for temporary stays as part of a mental health practice at 400 East Country Club Road. This is a staff, two staff photos of the property. It was a bed and breakfast. This house was built circa 1920. It has ample parking in the back. And anyway, these are recent photos of the property. Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, and so this is on East Country Club Road. And it's, to the west of it is the, this 15-unit apartment complex. So it already has quite a bit of compatible uses around it. The property to the east was zoned a commercial office by the Dr. Osmani, per his request, about maybe three years ago. And so it's still a vacant piece of property. On the north side of the Country Club, you can see some residential development. These are the surrounding land uses, R3 and commercial office. If you can see to the south, it's that same property owned by the Dr. Osmani. As of today's date, Planning and Zoning Division has received zero written protests and zero inquiries pertaining to this case. And staff recommends approval of this. We do have David Wright in, in the audience, who will be the owner of the business, of the professional business. And we stand for questions.
Commissioners, got any questions of staff while we hear from the applicants?
Not yet.
Thank you, Meredith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, sir, before you come up there, I'm assuming you're gonna speak in favor of it, but I have to ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this case? If so, if you'd like to come up and address the commission, you're more than welcome. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Melvin Salsito, 2702 Sidney Street, Roswell, New Mexico, 88201. I've known Dave Wright for 45 years. And, you know, I know I used to live there on Mosa, and Mr. McDaniel sold my house there years back. And anyway, it was a bed and breakfast, as stipulated. And what we try to do is help people. I'm retired from the Roswell Independent School District and worked mental health for close to 28 years. So anyway, I'm in favor of, you know, getting this going. I worked there too. So anyway.
Okay.
Basically.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Mr. Wright, you want to speak in favor of this request?
Yes, sir. Thank you for everybody tonight, having me. So Coral, we have three offices.
Sir, could you, could you give us your full name and address?
I'm sorry, David Wright, 1894 Chaparral Loop in Socorro, New Mexico. Okay. We have three offices, one here, one in La Cucu, and one in Socorro. We are a full-service, 432 full-service agency. You'll see a lot of people that just do therapy. We do a little bit of everything. We have one of the highest success rates as far as helping people get off the street, get off drugs, get a job, that type of thing. We, most of the agencies in town are not 432 full-service agencies, but we are. And promotion, parole probation gave us one of the highest confidence by saying that we have some of the highest success rate in the state. So basically, what we do, we take people that, that want to make a change, we do therapy with them, we get them off the street, we have somebody at their house 24/7 to monitor it. We also do what we call a group therapy in the morning, and then we do what we call CCSS, which stands for Comprehensive Community Support Services. We spend up to four hours a day with a client. And, you know, if they're sitting at home doing nothing, they're gonna do something. And a lot of times, it's not what, what's good, beneficial for them. They'll do drugs or whatever, alcohol, whatever. So they come to us.
Thank you.
If we have to send them to detox, we send them to detox first, medical detox, and then we give them a hand, a hand up so they can have a successful life. And do we have 100% success rate? No, but it's pretty high, like 70%, which compared to a lot of the other programs is extraordinarily high, when the average, national average right now is about 18%. So, you know, we, we do our best, one-on-one, whatever, to, to help people. We serve a free lunch to anybody that comes about. At lunchtime, where the clients are not, it doesn't make a difference. We go ahead and feed the hungry if we can. And so basically, we would like to house clients right in the house. Like I said, we'd have, we'd have a full-time monitor there. And it would be primarily females right now. And that we, we don't mix male and female. So if you guys would be considered to do that, it's a great help for the community and people that are distressed that really need, you know, it's our answer, getting people off the street and getting them off of drugs. So as you know, that fentanyl has become a very, very invasive thing in our country right now. We've had three clients that have overdosed on fentanyl. One was just 24 years old. And he came in for services. We saw him for a couple of weeks, made him see him after that, and then next thing I heard is that he had overdosed on fentanyl. And so those are the stories that we don't like, but unfortunately, it does happen. And so if we can save one life, one time, I think it's worth it. And so if you guys can consider, like I said, it used to be a bed and breakfast, so it's kind of, still like a bed and breakfast, but it's, we also have mental health there. So any questions anybody have, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, got any questions of the applicant?
Yeah. Could you kind of give us a rundown of what type of added security features will you be adding? Is there any concern with the clientele you have and the proximity to the high school there?
So I'm retinal cameras, you know, outside. And like I said, we do have somebody there on the, on the property 24/7. Okay, so I guess I didn't hear all your questions because I'm a little bit hard of hearing, so I shouldn't get a hearing aid, but I'm too vain, so I don't.
Sure, I was, I was just wondering what, what added security measures you were gonna take besides, besides like the security cameras? So I mean, is, is the movement of your clientele kind of restricted, or are they come and go? How does that work?
No, it's, it's restricted. Okay. They can, depends on what level they're at. If they're clean and they have a use for, you know, for qual, then we get, they have more freedom. Okay? But when they first come in, they, you know, they're pretty much on a restricted type of thing to where they need to go to the store or whatever. That's what we have the CCSS services for. So we will take them through the store, get them, you know, get whatever needs they might have. And so our security is very enhanced. And we pride ourselves in that we've never had an incident where somebody come in with a gun and wants to shoot us. Let's work that way. Okay? So we, the people that we do, we have a very close connection with our clients. We, we take a personal interest in their, in their welfare, and they feel that. It's not something like, a lot of times, you'll go to a therapist and see them 30 minutes, an hour a week. That's okay. But guess what? We found out it's not the best way to do it. Because they see them and they're gone, and the therapist, oh, that's another one from my checklist this week. We don't work, we don't work with a huge.
Hi, it's Terry. Quick question.
But the ones we do work with, we're successful.
The last guy you mentioned, Rosendo Dimas. Okay, does he have the same charges as you or the same charges as the other guy?
Substance abuse, or is it behavioral health as well?
Behavioral health, substance abuse. I mean, not everybody is substance abuse, okay? Some people. They're on the streets, they've got post-traumatic distress in them, whatever.
All right, thank you.
And they, they've been on the streets for a while, and they don't know how to get off the streets. So we show them the pathway to get off the street and have a better life. And so we do individual therapy, group therapy with them every day. And then, like I said, the CCS services to help them support whatever they want to do. Our goal is to not only get them off the street, get them a job, so they can be a productive person in society.
And how many clients do you have the capacity of serving at that facility? How many clients do you have the capacity for at that facility?
Well, now, we, we just, like I said, we just opened up here. We have six clients right now. Okay? So we'll probably have somewhere around 15 to 18 clients, not all in that house, but, you know. So our agency is not volume, it's quality. Okay? We could have a service where we do 100 people a week. There's a need for that, I guess, but with us, we're more concerned with the quality of the service that we give and the support that we give them so they can get a better life and go on with her life.
Sounds excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
They stole all my questions.
Yep.
Pardon me?
They stole all my questions.
You're welcome.
Is that a no? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Meredith?
Chair Story, there may be someone online. Is there anyone on, on the phone that would like to speak on go-to meeting?
No.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this case? Being none, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak against case 23-015? Anybody online? Any other questions, Commissioners? Staff, you got any further comments? James? All right, I would accept a motion.
All right, here we go. Based on the land use and zoning considerations, findings of fact, conclusions of law surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, staff recommendations, materials presented, and testimony received, I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning case 23-015 SUP.
Second.
We have a motion by Saul and a second by Jesse. Any further comments on clarification? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Case is passed. Thank you, gentlemen. You're more than welcome to stick around, or you're more than welcome to leave, whatever you'd like to do.
It's a good show sometimes.
All right. Yeah, I was trying to read through it.
Okay, next up is case number 24-001, a request for a special use permit in the R3 Residential Zoning District. Take a motion to waive the reading of finding of facts.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion by Greg and a second by Saul to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use and zoning considerations with respect to case 24-001. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have Ms. Meredith Fielder.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Chair Story. This second case is 24-001, special use permit, a request for a special use permit in the R3 Zoning District to operate an event venue and art classes at 417 East Wildy Street. This is on the northwest corner of Wildy and Garden. Here you can see, it was at one time a place of worship. It's in the R3 Zoning District, surrounded by residential. And on the other side is another place of worship. So you can see it's surrounded by R3 zoning, and R2, oops, there we go, on the south. As of today's date, I've heard from no one else regarding this zoning case. No, zero written protests and zero inquiries have been submitted or called in. And staff is supportive of this, this case as well.
Commissioners, got any questions, Meredith? Or any of the other staff while we got them up here? Okay, thank you, Meredith.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of case 24-001? Please come up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Omar Chevarria, is 811 Isaac Booker K. Smith, Roswell, New Mexico. Queremos abrir un salón de Jacy Benio. Contará con dos, dos salones para celebraciones de bodas, cumpleaños, y actividades corporativas o, o de oficinas.
Can I translate for you?
Sure.
De hace tiempos para poder traducirle a todos los públicos, por favor. Del principio, por favor. O empiezo? Sí. Con mi nombre y todo, pero. No, no, está bien, ya no más la. Que el salón Jacy Benio va a contar con, con dos salones para celebrar actividades de boda, de oficina, de corporación.
Jacy Benio will have two different halls available for different types of activities from weddings to gatherings. I forgot the rest. Assemblies and different things.
Entonces gracias al fire marshal Chris Case quien visitó el lugar para ver las, las cosas que nos hacían falta como los extinguidores, la capacidad para la gente que ocupa cada salón.
Fire marshal Chris Casey went and looked at the space for the capacity as far as how many people you can have, what they're lacking, fire extinguishers and things like that, ingress, egress.
Y el salón, de acuerdo a lo que no me comentó, un salón es la capacidad de 95, 99 personas, el otro es de 85 a 90 personas.
There's two, one of them is 95 to 100, and then the other one's 85 to 95. Yeah.
También contamos con la capacidad de un patio al frente y otro hacia atrás para los niños divertirse mientras los cumpleaños. Y al frente si quieren hacer una actividad como de fotos o, o al aire libre puede, puede tener.
They'll have a couple of outdoor spaces, one in the front, one in the back, stuff friendly for kids and things like that, where they can be contained and whatnot in some photo-friendly spaces up front.
También quería hacer como dos o tres veces al año actividades de caridad para, para ayudar a los indigentes, decorando artículos y, y para los niños también.
You'd like to do three times a year fundraising activities to help out for the community, things like that, on, on their, on their behalf?
También tenían los planes como en los días de semana que no tenga actividades como del salón, hacer actividades como de manualidades, de, de. Okay.
It could be painting, it could be, oh, sorry, telling you. Okay, so my name is Janice Gonzalez, and the address is 811 East Albuquerque Street, here in Roswell. I'll be the one that's gonna do the art classes. It could be painting classes, it could be baking goodies, decorating, and, or other art things for kids, and not just for kids, also for adults.
Yes.
Questions?
So I would assume you'll be bringing in like catering for events, for food to be catered in?
Yeah, we're gonna recommend other vendors around town that we know already, in case they need catering or decorate.
I mean.
Decorated people, also photographers or other, other vendors around.
And with the catering, would that be also catered bar service?
For now, we are not gonna serve alcohol, because we haven't done the permits or anything like that, but in the future, yes. We are not cooking inside of the place, because the fire marshal said that we have to do a suppression system, and we are not gonna do that. So there's no cooking in that place. It's just serving food.
Yeah. Would there be any concern from the staff for events with bar service in a facility adjacent to church?
Chair Story, Commissioner Holman. So I don't know how it works with a picnic license for events like that. I don't know how, oh, Masal does, so.
I can weigh in on that. So for a picnic service, there is, there really isn't a requirement for a permanent installation. We, we've gone to cater right next to church, not yet next to schools yet, but we've gone to, it's, if it's not gonna be a permanent installation, it's.
It's a temporary, it's a one, one time or one night or one.
Right. It shouldn't be an issue, and we've done it many times.
Yeah. And the findings say that the parking's adequate for the numbers that they're talking about, 90, 90 people, 80 people venue?
There's, there's some parking on there. I talked to the city engineer, to Louis Nahar, about the parking, stipulated it in Exhibit B. So there can be parallel parking. It'll be in the right of way, but it's, it's, it's off the thoroughfare along Garden. And then some angle parking along Wildy, that's also in the right of way, but it's, it's, there's about 15 feet between curb and sidewalk where they can park, and he's allowing it on Wildy. It's stipulated in Exhibit B. So it won't cover all the parking if it's a huge wedding, but that could happen at a church anytime. So the neighborhood is probably used to that kind of temporary situation.
That sounds good to me. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question real quick. Do you have a limit on the hours when you do have events? I notice that there's, there are, that is a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, we're wanting not to go over midnight. We know how it is, so we're not gonna allow any, any event go over midnight. It'll stop before that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Staff, any other comments? Any questions of the applicant, anybody? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this case? Being none, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak against this case? Nobody wishing to speak against, I would accept a motion, please.
Based on the land use and zoning consideration, finding of facts, conclusion of law surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, staff recommendations, material presented, and testimony received, I make a motion to approve zoning case 24-001 SUP.
Second.
We have a motion by Jana and a second by Greg to approve case number 24-001 SUP. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Case is passed. Thank you all. And you all are welcome to leave too. I know you've got a young one. Should've just passed it just because she's so cute.
Just for the record though, she didn't state her name. She just said, ah. She's not a witness. We'll allow it.
Okay, so Meredith, you want to explain this before we do anything, or you want to go ahead and get into it?
Chair Story, Commissioners. We're bringing this back to you. Staff is bringing this back to you, this annexation that you heard in September. It's, it has a time limit on it, so it has to go to city council. It has to have an ordinance with it. Ordinance is now in your packet. And so the, the city attorney worked with us on this to to bring it back to you. So we're starting over. And after it goes, goes through you, it will be forwarded to city council. And because it's an ordinance, they will vote to set a public hearing at their following city council meeting. So it will go to, to city council after this meeting in February. They'll vote to hold a public hearing and then in March they'll hold a public hearing. Okay, so it was just a timing issue and we don't do a lot of annexes here in Roswell yet, so so we're starting over.
Okay. Any questions on that before we proceed? Shouldn't take long since we've heard it once. Did I have a motion to waive the reading of the finding of facts, please?
Don't move.
Second.
We're gonna give you the seconds.
Seconds.
Yeah, you're gonna give you, you're gonna leave Jesse out. Yeah, you, he was kind of slow.
You gotta mumble a little more. Yeah, clearly.
Okay, we have a motion by Jana and a second by Saul to waive the reading of the findings of facts and land use and zoning considerations with respect to case 23-007. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? We've already heard Meredith. We've heard the case. I believe we have somebody in the audience, Mr. Carion. Would you like to, like to come up and speak?
Excuse me, Chair Story, I'm not sure that Commissioner Holman was there at this time.
I wasn't.
Go ahead, Finn.
Thank you. So this case is a request to annex 10 acres next and contiguous to the city boundary, the municipal boundary on East Brasher Road. The address of this 10 acres is 402 East Brasher Road. This slide shows an excerpt from the land division plat showing the 10 acre tract one from the 37.711 acre parent property. These are staff photos of the property under consideration for annexation and surrounding properties. You can see one of them looking southwest from the FedEx toward the property and Legendary Services, which is developed at 400 East Brasher Road as they have water trucks that they use in the oil fields. And the second slide is looking east and southeast from FedEx toward the property. And you can see there's, there's already high power lines on, on kind of in the right of way and sort of on the, as well. There is an easement along, parallel with Brasher Road. The Conference of Master Plan Preferred Land Use Scenario map shows this area for light industrial use as a preferred future land use. After the annexation goes through, hopefully it will Mr. Carrion will come back here for a request to rezone this to light industrial. And then the second map shows an excerpt from the 2016 Conference of Master Plan, the Annexation Priority Map. And you can see that this area is in Annexation Priority Number One. And here's the Chavez County Assessor Map and the zoning map. As you can see, it's surrounding area inside the city limits is all zoned I1 light industrial. So it's surrounded by I1 and county property. This is a carry-on annexation plat by LT Surveying. So this is the actual annexation plat that will be filed once, once it's all approved and the 45-day period of comment is over after the city council approves it. And as of today's date, we've received no, zero written protests and zero inquiries for this case to be heard tonight. The Chavez County Planning and Zoning Office submitted a letter dated January 19th, 2024, supporting annexation of this tract by the city. And staff is supportive of this annexation and stands for questions.
Just for my own information, it says that the reason that they want to be annexed is to obtain city Roswell water and sewer service. With the service running right there in Brasher, is someone in the county not eligible to tap, to get a tap from those lines and just certainly count they have to be part of the city?
They are not allowed to tap into the sewer. They're allowed to tap into water and pay double the rates, as I understand it. Is that correct, James?
Thanks.
There's someone on the phone, it sounds like, on go-to meeting? Is there anyone on go-to meeting who would like to speak?
I think it's those IT people back there in the back that are doing something kind of weird. Messing with us. Any questions, Meredith, or staff? Thank you, Meredith. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Juan Carrion and I'm at 25 Heli Circle, Roswell, New Mexico, 8821. And once again, I'm here to try to get this pushed a little bit forward. I know where's, you know, it takes time for this annexation, but I've been really, been wanting to get a shop, you know, for my oil and gas services. Basically for my parking trucks and stuff. I just want to get, get it done with. So I mean, even though if we don't get approved on the, you know, come to the city, you know, I'm gonna midway do it on or on county side, so. But the main, the main thing is I wanted to get the water and sewer for future use.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anybody opposed? Wish to speak against this case 23007? Anybody online? Being none, I accept a motion, please.
Make a motion based on the land use and zoning considerations, findings of fact, conclusion of law, surrounding land uses and regulations established in zoning ordinance and subdivision code and the staff recommendations. Make a motion to approve zoning case 23-007 annex.
Second.
To be forwarded to the city council. Is that correct, Meredith? That acceptable to you, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Got a second? Got a motion by Greg and a second by Saul to approve case number 23-007, the annex. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Case is approved. Recommendation approved. Again, sir, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to leave, whatever you would like to do.
If we gotta stay, he's gotta stay. What does that mean?
Lock the doors.
Run.
Oh, the city council.
Yeah, how did it get, how did, oh wait, go to city council. Oh, okay. Why? Because he's been waiting a long time.
Yeah, what happened?
We, we, we heard it and we voted on it.
We, we approved recommendation.
There, Mr. McDaniel, Chair Story, Commissioners. What happened was there's in the code, it's, it's not very well worded and so we thought we were gonna have to take it to the legal committee because it was an ordinance and then we didn't and so we don't have to do that after all. It, it was, it was basically protocol in following the code. So it kind of got, it kind of got in a legal loop.
Does guy have to pay again to come in front of us again?
No, sir.
Yes, we're timed out, I think.
It has delayed his project though for quite some time, so.
Well, like, like Meredith said, we, we're just not in the business of annexing in Roswell very often. Makes the city. Yeah. Well, now we, now we, now we know the process better, so they'll do better next.
It'll change next time.
We did our job and we followed the process of approval.
I just feel bad that he's had to wear these.
Next, we have other business, which is the commission's meeting schedule for next year. I believe that's in your packet at the back. For you people that will still be around, may want to look at it, see what you think.
I'm assuming that you'll still come to meetings.
No.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be on, we'll be online.
Any public comments? Yes, I have some. Yes. I thought you heard a response.
Do you want a motion to approve this schedule, or you just want anybody's input?
This is for informational purposes only. Now you have the schedule.
So what she's saying is you better all show.
Yeah. This better be in your calendar and it needs to be prior.
Next on the agenda is an an item to approve or recommend, I guess we're gonna be, a motion to recommend approval to the mayor and the city council to recommend Commissioner Steve Henderson for a second term. Is that correct?
That is something that you may, may do tonight. I have a couple of comments on this item.
Go ahead.
Chair Story, Commissioners. In front of you, you have a sheet that looks like this. This little table. And this shows the, the terms for the Commissioners. We have four Commissioners whose terms expire on March 31st, 2024. Position three, Commissioner Henderson's first term expires. Commissioner Henderson submitted an application to the city clerk to apply for a second term. Position five, Commissioner McDaniel's second term consecutive second consecutive term expires. Position six, Chair Stories, second consecutive term expires. And Commissioner Gutierrez, his first partial term expires. Position one. Staff request of planning and zoning. Commission consider Steve Henderson's application for a second term as well as Commissioner Gutierrez, who has stated this evening that he would like to be considered again for a first full term.
So we need to make a motion to the city council.
You want, you want two, or can they be combined into one?
I would, I would like separate, please.
I'll make a motion for
Okay.
I make a motion to recommend Steve Henderson to the mayor and city council appointment to a second consecutive four-year term commencing on April 1st, 2024.
Second.
That was really good.
You should do the other one.
I will be happy to do that.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Jana and a second by Jesse to recommend Commissioner Henderson for a second term to city council. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? That one is approved. Now we have one for Mr. Gutierrez.
I make a motion to recommend to the mayor and city council appointment of Richard Gutierrez to a second consecutive four-year term commencing on April 1st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion by Jana and a second by Jesse to recommend approval to the mayor and the city council for Mr. Richard Gutierrez for a second second term. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Passes.
Did, did you, like, did you vote for yourself?
I didn't, I was gonna, I was gonna say, can he, can he, can he second himself respectfully? I'm just like, well, we're all for that, but can you do that? I was just curious. I make a motion to approve myself. Just, can you do that? I feel like you can, because you're donating your time, so I feel like it's okay.
If not, I quit. All right, any other public comments? Since there's no public? Saul's in coach here right now, so. Yeah. We'd like to do that, yeah.
I stated the secret.
That's how the deal works. You show up.
Well, we were gonna get Jesse, but we knew then, and I were both on the way out. Any announcements? Anything else from the commission? All right, what time is it? It is 6:50 and the meeting is adjourned.
That for Monday.